Six thirty, let's call a meeting of the whole quarter. We have four regular board members tonight, so Peter will be an associate member tonight. Call for any adjustments to the agenda anyone may have. Not seeing any. I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Sub move.
Second.
The move is second that the agenda be accepted, all those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, the minutes of the July ninth meeting, which would have been our last meeting.
And will we accept the minutes as printed?
Second. The move is second that we accept the minutes from the July ninth meeting as presented. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, we have tonight the land use ordinance review and public hearing for Robert and Heidi Gordon and Arthur Porter for a mobile home at one seventy-three West Main Street. Map one lot eight C, it's in the R two zone. And it's a request for an approval for a home there. You want to come up, Robert, or whoever, and give us an idea of what you want to do? Have a seat here.
As you probably know, I'm Robert Gordon, one of the owners of the Up and Smoke Fireworks. We'd like to put a mobile home up in the back of our land.
That's about it, I think.
That's, do all that, and then we wanted to put a garage off to the side of it. So it'll be the home, mobile home and a garage.
Okay, at this time, we should open the public hearing. And I guess we'll start with the planning board, regular members. There are questions. Do you want to start, Tom?
The garage there for the trailer use or for the store?
No. Trailer use, not for the store.
That's what I got for now. Key?
Septic system, that get straightened out, everybody get approval on that.
Randy's asked for the septic system, Randy?
Yeah, uh, um, Robert is in, yeah, right. Talking with the site evaluator that done the originals, right? Still talking with?
Yes, Babbin.
Talking with Dick Babbin is with, excuse me, designed the original system, and I told him he's going to have to add that system, increase the size, or at least a site evaluator will have to tell him what he needs to meet that expanded system that they want to put in. I'm sure they're going to have to expand it because it was only, Robert and I were looking at it the other day, it was only big enough for the office itself, or the store itself.
Just to remind everybody on the board, this is a hearing just for the land use ordinance questions. It has, it doesn't need a site plan review and won't get one. So a lot of the things we cover in site plan review are not covered in this, they're covered by the code enforcement laws. Bruce, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess I got a lot of them, and I'm basically confused on the whole thing, as we said, talked to you before, but we're looking at this under site, uh, land use ordinance, page thirty-two, where residential, if you go down the bottom of the page, planning board review is required for a dwelling unit above or behind a commercial establishment, correct?
Right.
That's what we're here for, that's what we're looking at, not site plan review, not subdivision.
Right.
And if we're strictly a residential thing, Randy could just plain approve it.
Correct.
But we have this. You got the application, you, where is the septic system on the map here?
Well, here again, that's not going, that's not concerning us at all.
Oh, okay.
But the septic system, according to Randy, and you can see it on this plot, is right behind the?
And that was for the store?
That was for the store.
It's right, right, exactly, right behind the, the store.
We're gonna, the planning board's review is required under this, and I guess we go into some other sections there on safety or whatever, but we don't look whether he's required to have a septic system for a dwelling unit?
Yeah, but that's not our concern here again. That's all taken care of by the code enforcement officers.
Can you tell me where the septic system is going, Randy?
One hundred and thirty. What's that?
I'm just looking at this map where it was, I knew where some of the tests had been done previously.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where the trailer's going, I think.
Yes, yes, you're right. Way back when, yeah, before he bought it, there was a septic system design test pit done up there near where that trailer is, yes, for that office site that was going in there at one time.
And we don't care anything about the entrance permit because that's coming off, it's there, it's going to this property, the rest of it's there.
Right.
That was, I know we had it here, we parted the package, but it doesn't pertain to it. And look, I guess, you say the waste has nothing to do with it, but it's going to be a common waste disposal for both the fireworks store and the home? The same, same septic system or?
Well, Babbin's going to take a look at it. We're looking at putting it into the septic system now and envisioning a lead field.
Yep.
But Babbin said that he'll take a look at it to see which is better to do.
Otherwise, it'd be two systems, huh? I know what we're looking at for, we got, it requires sixty thousand square feet for a dwelling unit in the land use ordinance, but there's no specifications in there, you know, for a commercial one. Other than that's the minimum lot size, and you've got the minimum lot size. I'd say upfront, I don't like the fact that it's owned, uh, too, I wish it was owned commercial or something, that went down to twenty thousand square feet, but this is what we have to live with until we're there. I think it'd be much better if the whole thing was commercial for long ways. But we got this. So you put it in, and it's a residence, it's behind there, but it's not going to be considered as a home occupation, evidently. It's close to, it's on the same property, but you know, it's, it's close to, it's the number of employees, I guess, you would fit a home occupation.
It's going to be a regular home.
Yeah, but you have the, the commercial establishment. And that's a, that's a cloud there to me. Doesn't need sixty thousand square feet for both of them, that's, that'll separate them If you had the, if you had the home there first and putting the built-in, putting the store in, you might have, I can see conceivably, you might have come in and that was going to be a home occupation. Now it's the cart and then the horse, but possibly. And my legal question, I guess, you need sixty thousand feet for both of them, and if, you know, if it's a separate, separate, uh, septic system for two of them, I can see if you have one system, puts it more of a thing like it's a home occupation or it's dependent upon the home, should be there. I say, I wish we were down to something with smaller lot size than the rest written here, two separate things, but it's not. I would like to find out the legal opinion, whether you need the sixty thousand square feet for both buildings or not, and depending on how the, the septic system goes. If it were tied into one septic system that goes to dwelling unit or two separate systems? Because you're probably going to operate it just like it was a home occupation, just we'll have the community style, right?
Well, I'm not living in it anyways.
You're not?
No.
I'm living in it.
They're living in it.
Oh, okay.
They live in Belfast.
Yeah, I thought you were going to be living there.
No.
But you are part of, part owner of the business, correct? If I thought.
Not legally, no. That's why I was, uh, you know.
Okay.
One of the, I wouldn't have any inheritance problem with the, I did it before, you know, there'd be no problem with the inheritance.
So legally, no.
So it's a sep, it's a separate business, with a separate ownership of the dwelling I'd like to hear what the municipal has to say on it.
Well, I don't think we need that.
I said I would like to hear it, I don't know if the board would like it.
In commercial, in commercial two zone, we have the same situation, a minimum lot size for dwelling unit, and there's no mention of a lot size for a commercial one. So somebody could have the same thing in, in C two.
Only going, this is our two, one, let's look at the thing. I told you before, I'd like to see a commercial one, you didn't be going through this. Something different.
You have any other questions?
No, that's the whole thing, uh, it's, it's mighty enough.
Brian?
So what's the minimum in R two, a lot, lot size?
Sixty, sixty thousand.
Okay.
Same as commercial.
And he's got how many in there now?
Pardon?
How many, how many square feet is in the parcel now? From the, I have it on this one, I think it was on the prior application for the store.
Yeah.
I don't have it with me.
Real fast, look up the, uh?
Just under sixty thousand, I think it's fifty, fifty-nine.
And the land use says it's sixty thousand feet per dwelling. Minimum lot size per dwelling unit, sixty thousand square feet.
So, so Randy, this meets the sixty thousand square foot minimum?
Well, my take on it is, this was a lot, this, the lot was a developed lot before we had the land use, which is an existing lot of record, okay? And the land use ordinance says sixty thousand square feet per dwelling unit, but where it's an existing lot of record, you can't get sixty thousand square feet out of an existing piece of property. My understanding is that you can't prohibit somebody from, from, uh, building on a piece of land after a land use ordinance has been enacted, if they can get the storage site on it. That's my understanding.
Okay, so there will be only, if this is approved, there would be only one dwelling unit there?
That's right, it could never have another one, right.
So if this was a home occupation, let's say the dwelling unit was there and he was applying for the, a home occupation store?
I don't know, I, I find it strange to call it a home occupation.
Yeah, and, and since, after there's no interest in the, in the business now.
Yeah, okay.
But, but again, I mean, it would be no different than somebody else having a piece of property along there with a business on it, and they had room enough to put a house up. That's, that's the way I'm seeing it, uh, you know.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, I noticed now the garage is fifteen feet at the minimum away from the lot line, so I believe that handles a setback, okay? But I don't see what the distance is between the garage and the trailer.
Well, we don't have a distance, we don't have a set distance between the, we don't require, all our, all our ordinance requires is ten feet off the property line.
Uh, is it wide enough so that fire and emergency services can get in there? Yeah, well, you've got twenty-two feet away from the trailer, fourteen feet width of the trailer, so then you've got fifteen away from the lot line for garage, and how wide is the garage?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so, just a quick math here.
Any idea, Robert, what you'd have for distance between?
Well, what I did is I measured back from the boundary marker, and actually I added on to the porch too, so when the trailer sets, it's actually going to be closer to the road, because I, we also have a, they have a four-foot porch off the back of it.
Okay.
So I concluded the porch to the boundary marker.
So that twenty-two feet is to the edge of that back porch?
Right.
Okay, and then the distance between the, the garage and the trailer would estimate at what? Not that it makes much difference, but to?
No, it's probably going to be, it's going to set back a little bit further than the trailer. And then, because they have a porch that comes out with a handicap ramp, because there's going to come down a handicap ramp and right into the tra, right into the garage. So roughly fifteen feet maybe, give or take, I mean, I didn't really measure it.
All right, and then you offset it more by moving the trailer down?
Right, the trailer's forward a little bit, then the garage is back a little bit, because you've got fifty feet from the garage to the boundary marker, seventy feet from the trailer to the back of mountain, mountain, boundary.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be a problem. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and you bought the land when, was it two thousand fourteen?
Yeah.
And when was the land use ordinance passed?
Two thousand seven.
So why would you say it was laid out or developed?
Because it's a lot of record. He bought that piece of property the way it was, under the original deed it showed.
I thought you bought the, some additional land to get the sixty thousand square feet.
I bought the land, the one junk.
Yeah, one junk, got the whole thing at sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Because initially, no, it wasn't.
It, it was the, if I remember right, it was, now, now I'm picking, but, I'm picking my memory, but if I remember right, it was, I can't think of the guy's name, that come in with the, wanted to put the offices in there, he was the one that bought that ex, extra land to get the sixty thousand square feet to do what he wanted to do.
Yeah.
If I remember right. And Robert bought what, what that property was from that point on.
And he bought it from Bronx?
That, yeah, right, that's the guy's name, yeah.
The Bronx hold the whole, that Bronx hold the whole thing?
Hmm.
The whole lot up there, the whole fifteen acres.
Yeah, but I can't think of the guy's name.
No, I know, we both know, he was running stuff down by the nut house, and he lives up by the rush road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got that. His last name is, is McCallitt, McLoppity?
Yeah, that's it, something like that.
We got, after they played twenty questions.
They couldn't put that floor office or six office unit in there.
And he'd need more.
But this is not sixty thousand square feet, it's fifty-eight thousand square feet. I have another question, wasn't there supposed to be a buffer somewhere in there? There were trees, I think they were planted, they died or something?
Outside the roof?
Um, along the back of the property?
Yep.
Is this in the way where that buffer would be?
No, it's off the property line where the buffer would be.
I'm sorry?
It's off the property line where the buffer would be. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The buffer's coming in naturally now. And then I just drop a, draining that off and dishing it into the water.
Yeah, it's draining off really well.
And let's go do landscape and stuff.
Peter, did you have any questions?
Hmm, no. I, well, I do have a question, is, are there any state regulations as far as the proximity of a residence to, um, potential explosive environment?
Sixty feet, space line.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. I already asked, the first question I asked him, when, when he brought this paperwork in to me. And it, it is sixty feet.
Plus.
Plus, plus.
Anything else, Tom? Tom, I'm sorry. Peter?
I'm supposed to.
That's it, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll open it up to questions from the, assuming public. Do either of you have any questions?
Well, we, Greg has a question. This summer, Robert came over and my wife was at Roland Home, and he found a stake that was next to a rock, it was just an iron stake that had ribbon on it, which, according to the town map, that's not the property line for him. Uh, I don't know what it is, but according to the map, his property line is above mine. That's why I complained last time, because I never got a letter, because of, I was a budding landowner, I thought.
Right.
But according to the, the map right there, his line is above the property line between Roland and I. Which, the line that, the stake that you found was thirty-four feet south of that map. So if you take that in consideration, and you look at the way he's got his plot plan laid out, and look at the way that that map is, it's pretty ninety-degree, this is pretty near a ninety-degree angle right here, right here from this, from this property line here, and this is where it's thirty, this is where the map is that you and I looked, no, you and my wife looked at.
Right.
Goes up this way.
That's the one that the surveyor found, when they surveyed, when they surveyed it from the bank.
Yeah, that's not the one, this, your property line is about, this is Roland, my line right here. This is where this, this is certified.
Survey stake is there, it's marked.
Surveyed marker and identification right there. And this, according to this map, this shows it being, yellow line being above that, which if it is, you don't own this land right here, and is that going to give you enough room?
There's still plenty of room there.
If, if I can, Greg brought that, Greg called me this afternoon, and you guys, most of you know, I'm not in this week, I'm out. And so I didn't have a chance to research this, and I was trying, that's why I came in and asked Bruce about the name of that subdivision. But while I was sitting here, when you guys were talking, I did notice, Robert, that on the deed here, so, and just bear with me here a minute, that line that Greg is talking about here, on your deed, only says that that line is, uh, one hundred and thirty-seven and seven one hundred feet, so it's a hundred and thirty-seven, almost a hundred and thirty-eight feet on that, that back line according to your deed. And my suggestion would be is just to make sure that you surveyor to have something to check so you know where that line is. They're not opposed to you doing this, it's just to make sure that you don't end up with your garage, not on that property, that's all.
Right.
Well, it's a conflict between the town map and?
Yeah, because our town map's, apparently, we've got to check and see if it's right, and that's why I was trying to find the, the, what do you call it?
Subdivision.
Right, so that I can look and see what the subdivision plot plan said on it.
Question, um, okay, question. Wouldn't it be best just to get a survey?
Yeah. Yeah, for that line. Just to protect yourself, because I'd hate to, I don't want to see you guys all in the middle of a land dispute here, you know, because that's what happened, and if you, if you've got the building out and it doesn't meet the setback, then we're going to start all over from scratch. It's just, just a precautionary thing, really, I mean, it is.
I know when it was done, it was done by a survey, and he, he was running the max for the bank, and that's how we, we found it in the first place, because we couldn't, Bronk and I couldn't find it, I had no idea where it was, and then he started running measurements, and he just, he's the one that went over and told us where it was going to be, and then we found it jammed down in behind a, a big rock.
Every one of these lines that you've got, I read a deed, every one of these other lines, exactly, right to the point, except that one, you've got a hundred and seventy-five feet, and on your deed it says a hundred and thirty-seven feet, so we got?
It's closer, it would be closer to a hundred and thirty-some feet, because we measured from hit, from the, Carolyn's line down to our line, and it was a hundred and five, and it was thirty-four and a half feet, thirty-four feet.
Right.
From there down to that rock, the rock pin.
Right. So, I mean, it, it, it's just a ridicule.
It doesn't coincide with the map. That's my concern, I didn't.
Oh, I just, the only way I know it's, the way it was was because of the surveyor, he's the one that started running measurements, so that's how we came up with it.
But you don't have an actual survey?
I don't have it, no, the bank, Mike, I mean, he's the one that did the survey for the bank.
And look, I'm just reading off warranty deed, which isn't a third base, so.
Thank you, but we can get that line, you know, that's?
Yeah, and, and again, this is, this isn't something about your chops or nothing.
No, no.
It's just something to make sure that?
Well, I'd rather make sure that, like you say, that that's not setting on the wrong property line.
Let's, yeah, and let's just say that if that did happen, I, I know it's not going to happen, but if it did happen, and you come in to get a variance, that boat wouldn't float. I'm just saying.
That's kind of why, that's kind of why that I barked a little bit at, at the store, because I never got a budding letter.
I know.
And I said, that's not right, and I brought it up to somebody, and it doesn't coincide with the map. So you look at the map, this is a, this is a map that came off the town website today, and this looks like a square, it looks like the ninety degrees from our, the main board, the main line, and it's above his and my line, so it wouldn't make me up in the butter. You know what I mean?
Right.
So, I mean, I built a house on somebody else's land one time, it didn't go very well. We was told to do it, but.
When you get that, uh, survey, if you give Randy a copy, so that you can get in touch with G I S and get that fixed on, on the town, town map?
And when I get the information, I'll, I'll let you know, too, you guys.
Well, I was just wondering whether, we know where our line is, and I know where my line is, but?
But this way it'll be done and everything will?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's going to be resurveyed?
That one line.
One line, yeah.
They'll have to, they'll probably have to take three readings from three sides.
Make the money worth it.
Well.
If you got it, if you got it, there's no problem.
Any other questions from you two gentlemen?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, let's move along and to, uh, close the public here.
Six fifty-five.
Six fifty-five.
It's a pencil, I don't care.
You're on vacation, aren't you?
I am, I told you.
Okay. You all have copies of the deed, the applicant has title of property one seven three West Main Street, and as I told the board, I included DOT entrance permits from the fireworks store along the receptage plan from the fireworks store. No site plan review is, is required in this. And the CEO has determined to his, um, best extent that the application is complete. Would you look at the application and need a motion that's complete?
A sub move.
A second?
I'll second it.
Under discussion? The move is in second, the application is complete, all is in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, if you look at the land use ordinance under section five, paragraph A, general performance standards, it's on page thirty-six in, in the latest copy.
All right, go, number thirty-six.
You must have it all cut.
No, I just got it, a while ago.
Thirty-six of nine.
General performance standards?
Yeah, general performance.
Yeah, thirty-six of fifty-nine.
I got thirty-three of fifty-nine. I got an old one. I just got them, I'm a long guy.
The same thing, keep going, it's back there. Yeah, there it is, there.
There he is. There he is.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it must go the other way. Find section five.
Open a page, you'll get it all right.
So you see there, under general performance standards, ones for danger, ones for vibration, ones for waste, noise, and on the next page, there's a lighting standard. I'll need a motion on what standards you think are applicable, and whether they're met or met with conditions.
This is the garage, you're going to be just? This is the garage, you're gonna be just sort of, store your cars in or something?
Yes.
I would say that the only one that might be applicable would be item number three. Then all the rest of them, non-applicable, is not the exterior lighting, or we don't have anything on it, it's not gonna have noise and vibration. The danger is not gonna be in the residence and the outdoor. I don't know if that's gonna have loud rock bands there or not, but I don't think it's gonna be a lot of noise.
You know, my cat doesn't make any noise.
Yeah, and I didn't think it was gonna have any...
Is that a motion?
Well, as I said, I just look and say the waste, you're gonna take care of the, the, uh, personal waste, septic waste or something, but it hasn't been determined how yet.
Right.
So...
Well, wait a minute, look at waste, look at the definition.
I did.
Yeah, that it'll not be dumped in any river stream, water, that's how you perform the standard, but...
Right.
There will be waste coming out of it.
I said that's the only one I have any question on, I'd leave it open to someone else.
Is that a motion, the only applicable one is waste?
I'd like to hear the, of the, what the rest of the board thinks on that, if that applies.
I don't have a problem with it.
This is not applicable?
No, that danger, vibration, noise, and lighting are not applicable.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay.
So the only one you're saying is applicable is, is waste?
Yes, till we get straightened out about the septic system, once that's done.
Nope. Then we can have a motion on it, whether it's met or not.
Right, or met with a condition.
Right.
So do I hear a motion?
Yes, I made the motion, Keith seconded it.
I'm sorry, what was a motion again?
That danger, vibration, noise, and lighting do not apply.
Okay. All those in favor? Five zero zero, now what about waste?
Well, I think it applies, and I think that it's met with conditions. Once we find out how, uh, there's a gentleman that's gonna check uh, the leach field to see if they need an enlarged leach field or a new septic system, I believe his name was Bab. And once, once he, uh, makes the determination, you know, that...
His name's Steve, Babbin?
Well, actually, Randy won't let the house be built without that.
Okay.
So, I don't really think it...
If I can interject something here.
Yeah, go ahead.
He's, and I haven't told him this, but I mean, this is standard, he can't get a building until I get a septic system done, it's not gonna happen. And I think I did tell you that, didn't I, Robert?
Sure, oh, that's why I got Richard again.
That's state law.
Yeah.
So if I ride him out of permit, I'm in trouble with more than him.
I think we can put a condition on it, that...
Well, I would make a motion...
He won't get a, a permit.
Yeah, I would make a motion that the waste has been met, because you cannot build the building until the CEO approves the septic plan.
Do you wanna use that as a condition, or just say it's been met?
You know, that's why I would say that the waste standard has been met, because he's gonna make sure it is. You know, he can't build it until Randy says septic is okay.
Yeah.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Bruce.
And I'll cover the commercial part of it as well.
Absolutely, yep.
The both of them, because that one's already built and already has a system.
Right, and Dick, my understanding is that, talking with, with Dick in the past, that when it comes to these applications, the system can either be expanded to meet both, or, Robert and I have talked about this, he might have to put a whole separate system in, and he's not opposed to doing that, so one way or the other, both buildings will have septic waste.
Probably be who's gonna put in a septic system, then he can sell the fireworks store right outright.
I don't think he could, because again, it's a sixty thousand square foot dwelling unit, he couldn't sell, sell it with that, even though it doesn't meet that, because we're up a couple of thousand feet. Basically, he can't sell that piece of property unless he sells the whole thing as a unit. It can't happen.
That'd be interesting, just change his owner.
Unless, unless we...
How many times have they said that?
Yeah, I know, but that was my point, if you changed to commercial, it still requires sixty thousand square foot.
Yes, it does, on the commercial.
Yeah, it does, look, look up the requirements. Lot size per dwelling, sixty thousand square foot.
I think it does.
If you read up here, this commercial's looking, well, we've got five thousand square feet.
Now, that's where, one was the subdivision up there? Yeah, you're right, but that, that didn't go.
Change it something.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right.
There's a, uh, motion in, and it's been seconded?
Yes.
That, uh, number three waste has been met, all is in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, you turn to thirty-seven, which is five B, specific performance standards. Again, there's quite a few that aren't applicable, if you look them over, adult entertainment, cluster development, home occupations, junk yards, manufactured housing, signs, towers, transit accommodations, windmills, wireless facilities, and then active, activities requiring site plan review.
I move that only, uh, number five manufactured housing is applicable.
How do you wanna, my question is, how do you wanna handle eleven?
Well, you've already determined that there are no activities that require a site plan review, it's land use ordinance.
Okay, so we'll just say that that's not applicable?
I would.
Okay, that's fine with me. Is there a second to, to the motion?
I thought he was gonna go with Randy, he's gonna say planning review.
He, there is no such thing as a site plan review.
You're saying it's good.
No, I'll second. It's been moved in second that the only applicable one is manufactured housing. Do you want to take a separate motion then, on whether that's been met?
Yes.
Okay, all is in favor of, of the only applicable one, uh, specific performance standards, is number five, which is manufactured housing, all is in favor? Five, five zero zero. Okay, now, only applicable one, five, which is manufactured housing. Randy, do you wanna go over, before you'll issue a, a building permit or whatever, what type of manufacturing houses are, uh, permissible?
On, on this?
Yeah, didn't you say any one that's manufactured after a specific date?
Right, right, anything after seventy-six and, uh, seventy-six, and it's gotta have all the HUD stuff on it and everything else, but they're putting in a brand-new one, so it's gonna meet the standard that we have for, uh, manufactured housing.
Okay. I think that clarifies that.
And in your packet, I think it's in your packet, but I got one here of the...
I got one, yeah.
You don't?
I do.
You do, okay, yeah, this is what he's putting in, so...
It looked official, I'll make a motion that that, uh, standard has been met.
I'll second. It's moved in second that, uh, the standard number five manufactured housing has been met, all is in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, if you turn to page forty-two, in the land use ordinance. Down at the bottom under G, positive findings required. I'm sorry.
That's okay, we got it.
Did you find it?
Yeah.
First one, uh, is a permit, a permitted use in the district in which it's proposed to be located.
I move it is a permitted use.
Second? Moved in second that it is a permitted use, all is in favor? Five zero zero. Next one is, it's in conformance with applicable performance standards in section five.
We just reviewed that, and it is, right.
I'll second that.
Moved in second that it is in conformance with, uh, section five performance standards, all is in favor? Five zero zero.
Randy, are there any other permits that, uh, are needed?
Yeah, he'll have to have a permit, size of the building, he'll have to have a septic permit, permit, internal permit, and a building permit.
So I think if we make a motion, it should have a condition that, uh, the proper permits will be given to the CEO before it's...
I'll move that, uh, item G three has been met with the condition that all necessary permits are given to the code enforcement officer before, uh, the building is...
I'll second that.
It moved in second that number three, which is, uh, as, uh, the condition of approval will receive all the permits. All is in favor? Five zero zero. And four will provide safe access and egress from existing or proposed public, uh, and private routes.
You have a, just, where's the planned driveway to the residence?
We're gonna use the same driveway.
Same driveway, yeah. It goes in, but it doesn't go to, well, I just, come around to the left.
We're gonna extend the driveway on the left-hand side of the building, straight up, right back over into it.
That's what I'm going up on the left, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was a stipulation in the existing DOT permit.
With one entry.
One entry.
Yeah, I was just wondering where the driveway to go into there.
Yeah.
'Cause you got a good sized parking area in front, you could drive it around back if you wanted.
You can drive anywhere.
You got the whole, you got the whole lot, you can put it where you want.
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, based on that, I say then the condition has been met.
Second.
Moved in second that, uh, the safe access and egress condition is met, all is in favor? Five zero zero. Hey, I'll need a, a motion on the complete application.
I move the, uh, complete application has, uh, the application is deemed complete with the conditions as specified, uh, you know, where we get the permits under G three.
Second on that?
I'll second.
Moved in second that, uh, that the application is approved, all is in favor? Four zero, uh, four one zero. Okay. Randy, you have a, one, one of them, I've got another one. Can you, Randy, put down, uh, under conditions of approval on that?
Yeah, I will. Yeah, if Brian gives me a copy, boy, he's got, I'll make sure to get it.
Oh, I'll mail it to you.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I haven't put anything on top of this, but I can finish that, uh, with date and the numbers and all of that. Like, like Greg said, one victory's just...
I'm bringing my fan.
Don't even have a fan.
No, I don't.
Go ahead. You do it. I said, what are you? I'm gonna take off and do nothing. I came down today and Randy wasn't here, but... I don't know why. I came down today, but you weren't here. You guys were talking, my life, it was last night, yeah. Well, he's taking the day off.
Even though I suppose the football society had him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I gotta do that.
Yeah. Before we give you your copy, let me get that information onto that, all the conditions on it.
Sure.
Then I'll get it to you next week.
I gotta go.
Oh, you done it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
He's giving you a break.
Sign it?
He's giving you a break.
He is.
Now, if you talk about somebody being out to camp, a guy drove, four people got together, and then two of them decided not to, so the other two built a, built a well. And then the guy bought the land beside of it, which he didn't know had that much of it. He got looking at it, so I have to, in fact, I even helped him draw a string down through this, he was a line with, the well's on his land.
They say thank you very much.
The worst part of it is, you wanna put a septic system in the top of his garage, he can't do it now, he's too close to the...
It's just...
He was too close to the well.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
It's gotta be the real way.
How much I tell you? One forty?
Was it one forty-three, was it? One forty-two?
One forty.
One forty.
That's what it was, I was saying, I was looking at it, I didn't put the window.
Okay.
Well, sir?
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck in your home.
Yeah, we need the tax money.
That's so. Less upkeep, right?
One more. Randy, do you have code enforcement office report, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, there was, uh, just, just a couple of things, I mean, it's, it's been, it's been busy this summer, it's been right up crazy with our building permits and stuff, and a couple of things you're gonna notice in town, uh, our commercial projects is going on, but they're under the twenty-five percent, or just at the twenty-five percent upon amount that our ordinance allows without planning board approval. Uh, one of them's right to the button, he wanted to go bigger, but anyway, he wouldn't. Uh, Ronnie Merritt, who was added on, and who was the other one?
Where did he add on? Where did he add on?
Seasport Automotive?
Seasport Automotive.
Oh, oh, okay.
He added on two more bases, another one.
Okay.
Enough, he, he's rated as twenty-five percent.
Okay.
And, uh...
Solar brace.
Hmm?
A solar guy up there.
Yes, that's, thank you, that's right. Solar Dog, Sun Dog Solar has added on to theirs, but again, they're right under that, right at that minimum point that they've had, and uh, with Ronnie, they didn't have no problem at all, because I was here when that one was done. Sun Dog Solar, I had to go back and search the records to see if they'd done anything prior to that, to add to that twenty-five percent of the original building, and they're rated, again, they're rated at the point where they've reached their maximum, and a new guy is, well, he, he, anyway, somebody else bought it, and they, they purchased it, and, and he's doing that. The other things are minor things, I know this is...
Wait a second, someone purchased Sun Dog?
Yes, it doesn't belong to, uh, oh, God, who did that?
I know who you mean.
Yeah, see, I'm terrible. But, yeah, yeah, I share a young, he probably is thought he's that bought it, he's bought the property, and he's leasing it to Sun Dog Solar. As a matter of fact, I think, actually, listening to him talk, I think he's got interest in Sun Dog Solar, maybe not, but, um, they, they... They, they've added on because the business has grown, they know it's growing, which is a good thing. The other thing, the other thing is concerned, and Brian's mentioned this a couple of times, and, um, been in to see me and talk to me about it, is the old Sisport Automotive building out on Route one, out on the other end of town. I've noticed that they've put more bays on, you guys approved them for two sto- two separate stores. I haven't been able to catch up with the owner himself, but, uh, it's something I'm very well aware of, that he can't put more than the two stores that you guys approved back last fall on that, that's all he can do, unless he can back to you guys with an updated plan, and I told him that way back, my goodness, it was this spring, I said, you're only approved for two, two stores. So what he's got planned, I have no idea, and I know the sign out there says, uh, a mini mall, but. It, it's, it's under your approval, it can't be a mini mall at this point in time, so. If he does get to that point, I'll have to put a stop before he can get started.
Is that Sisport Motors?
Yeah, right by the side of Mary.
Yeah.
Used to be the restaurant.
And what's he gonna put in one?
We're Sisport.
Yeah, we're Sisport, it used to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Huh? No, he thought, he's talking about Sisport.
No, 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 out, out where Ronnie used to be, out the other end of town, by, uh, Mary Seakins.
Belfast Line.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
That building there.
It's a, that was the security guy.
Yes, and that's what he's gonna do, he's putting in, he's gonna make security lock, and he's gonna have a place where he's felt with security locks in the same building. That's what he was approved for under his plan of, he's not approved to put in two other stores besides that.
It said, it said, it says, uh, a sign says a three store complex, yeah.
And he's got three doors.
He's approved for two store complex.
Is that Larry Dakin?
What?
Is that Larry Dakin, did you still own that?
No, this guy bought it.
Oh, he did buy it.
We haven't. He says he owns it, and he put a lot of money into it, but we don't have a deed that's come through with this, I can't think of the guy's name, Oha- O'Hara, or it, it's, it's, it's a different name anyway, and, uh, uh, I met him just once, met with Black this spring when he come in, and got a building permit for remodeling permit, because you guys had already approved him for the, for the business, but that place was deplorable, a water runway through the floors of it, so they put cement and everything.
They spent some money on it.
He spent a lot of money.
Put a lot of drainage around there.
Hmm?
He put a lot of drainage around.
Yeah, and he worked with the state to put the drainage in, because again, my, my friend down the street come in and I hadn't go through that whole thing again. So.
Would you really now? Would you really?
And I see Left Bank Books, the old Left Bank Books is now gonna have a Montessori school.
I see that, yeah.
And across the street, of course, we've got the upholstery guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Is he still there?
Yeah, still there.
A lot of antique signs on the windows, right?
No, they moved out, they came in and out quick, that farm that's up.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, they were, they thought they could sell more through the store than having people go up their long driveway.
Who's, who's having a Montessori school?
The sign says Coming Montessori School, right in front of David Talley Anderson's building, he still owns that, right?
They can't have a school there with a.
No, she can't have a school, she, no, I, I don't know what she's got advertised, I spent a lot of time with her over that this summer, because she wanted to do certain things, and I even, to the point where I went to the fire marshal's office, and the fire marshals, she called them themselves. And ought to put a school in there, you can go so many students, but once you go over that, then, then you, it's a whole different criteria, you gotta have a back entrance, you gotta have a smoke sprinkler.
Yes.
Sprinkle system home on that, if she stays under, and I can't remember exactly how many it is, but it's a small amount, if she stays under a certain amount at a certain period of time, from three to nine to threes, I think the hours are, then she doesn't have to do that, and she's very well aware that that's what she's got to stay with, and I told her, I said, it won't be me that comes on to you, it'll be the state fire marshal, because I will report it.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to be, I mean, I, I, I'm. God forbid, some six year old or eight year old or an adult happen to get in there on a fire and they can't get out.
Hmm.
You know, and they can't, the windows are big enough to get out on the side, but that doesn't meet egress, it doesn't meet egress as far as a commercial building goes, cause you got to have a door, you can't do the same thing as you can in a residential unit with windows.
I would think especially with small children.
Oh, yeah, and, and another thing you guys are aware of anyway, Bruce, I know Bruce is aware of it, and, but the, uh, the, the cafe moved next door, and they've gone through every bit of it, they, they, they redone the plumbing, everything was there and, you know, existing, so it's just a transfer from one building to another one, and they, they, of course, he's really good at work, but he's met all the criteria. We did bump heads with the drainage system, the sewer drain, uh, floor drains, but the state said they could do one thing, and somebody else said they could do something else, so. Again, I think I've told you guys this before, but interdepartmental state agencies are sometimes difficult to work with, because one thinks one thing and one thinks another, and I'm supposed to make it all work, but we come to.
Between the dog and the hydrant.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But they've got floor drains, they're not typical.
Yeah.
Drains that drain right into the system, they're floor drains, and his backs, the back kitchen is, is, uh, tiled, so he can wash the whole system right down, he can wash the whole floor and everything down, which, again, is a sanitary thing.
The Montessori school, is there any regulation or setbacks of, of placement for his alcohol or, uh?
No, not as long as, as long as she meets those criteria with the fire marshal, those are the biggest things she has, because of the, because again, of the size that she wants to do.
Okay, I know there was something with the church, but I didn't know.
Yeah.
Wasn't that?
Yeah.
School.
Hmm.
The other thing you guys probably were out too, I mean, it's really, I've been dealing with the. What is it, the church over here, since early this spring.
On Prospect Street?
No, Knox Brothers Avenue, this is the next one over, yeah, you know, George, and, and, uh, uh, they're gonna put a addition on the back of the church.
Oh.
And.
Oh, the congregation?
Yes, congregation church, and, uh, I have worked with Dan Nichols. He's a, that's kind of interesting, I guess he's on staff with the museum and also with the church, he's one of the deep into board members or something on the church. But anyway, uh, finally, they've come to an agreement with the museum and the stuff, so that they meet the property line setbacks. And the town, they couldn't meet on the town, but the town, the, the, the James and the, and the.
Sletman.
Sletman, thank you. Uh, said that that road would never be any more than what it is, so they didn't worry about that setback off the road. So, those are the major things that have gone on in our commercial area.
I see the field out.
Lots of activity, that's good.
There is a lot, Brian, there's a lot of activity, I mean, uh, I've got, I was showing somebody tonight. I just finished up a stack of, of, uh, building permits that I've got behind, I give people authorization to go ahead and do it, but I've been behind five weeks on it, because other stuff comes in, George can tell you, this, my door should have a shut and be. Why, I see why James is out here instead of out front now. But, cause they stop and, and, you know, but no, it's been good, it's been good, it's been, we've had a good year. I think it's the most permits I've ever written out in this town since I've been here. And some of the sheds and stuff, but I mean, you know, it's, it's growing, it, 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 it's, 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 it's growing. Won't pay my wages this summer for the town, really, with the fees and stuff. So that's a good thing.
The acreage down across from the locksmith shop we were just talking about, that been sold, I heard it been sold, that, you wanna meet Bruce?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was sold.
Oh, who bought it?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I know one fellow that bought it. I didn't know if he'd turn around and sold, turned it over, I haven't seen him.
Well, I remember when he came in here.
He told me he sent the check to Saudi Arabia.
Yeah, I remember.
And it was, and the sale was listed in the paper.
Yeah, I remember when he came in here, and then tragically, his daughter was the one who was hit by a car on Route one.
Yeah.
Yeah. This way down here, you mean?
Yeah, that was sad.
My hoop, yeah, I call it mama hoop, but it's not my hoop.
And the old mill was sold this summer, the old mill site on the other end of town, out on Route one, way out. Right, the old, right across from Mary, Mary Seakins, again, that big piece of property where they was gonna put the subdivision, uh, what, two years ago?
That's what Bruce was talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
He was talking about.
I was saying Mary Seakins, I was thinking the other Mary's.
Yeah.
Yeah, after we had a, had a subdivision, and I don't. Oh, didn't tell me what he was gonna do with it, you know, he told me he bought it.
He hasn't said what he can do with it, he just said he bought it for an investment.
Yeah, he's done what he does well with investments.
Absolutely.
And Mermaid Plaza is still Mermaid Plaza.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else you had?
I can't think of anything, if you think I forgot something, I can, but I think I've got everything covered.
Okay. Any questions? Let's adjourn then, can I add a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I guess the general public left.
Yeah, all in favor?